I'd like to call the Reevesville City Council Meeting Tuesday, March 12, 2024, to order. First thing on the agenda will be invocation by Reverend Brian Rivers, pastor of Baptist Temple Church, 729 Woodmore Street, Reevesville, North Carolina.
Appreciate the opportunity and invitation, want to pray on behalf of our city. Let's go to the Lord. The gracious heavenly Father, we are so humbled and grateful tonight that we can come before your throne, Lord God. We thank you that you have made that possible for us to know you, for us to commune with you, Father God, for us to speak with you, the sovereign, almighty, powerful, just, glorious God through your son, Jesus Christ. Will we come before you tonight and we're so thankful for this city? Father, we thank you that we have the great privilege of being able to live here and call this place our home, being able to work here, being able to serve here. Father God, we pray that we would use our lives in the greatest ways possible, Father God, to make as much contribution as we can, Father God, to the prosperity of Reevesville, North Carolina. God, thank you for our mayor. I thank you for each member of our city council, Father, we live in before you tonight. We pray over this meeting, God, and ask that your spirit would guide everything, Father. We pray that you would be glorified, Father, through every conversation, every question, every discussion, Father, every point that needs to be made, Lord. We ask that it would be done in a way that's pleasing and honoring to you and you alone, Father. Lord God, we thank you so much for those who diligently and sacrificially serve our city, Father God, for our law enforcement, our emergency personnel, Father, for doctors, nurses, for all who live here. Father God, we thank you for each and every one, Lord. We thank you, God, for your blessings over this city and pray that you would continue to guide us in every way. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in streets full with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, we have Councilwoman Barbara Dejeunay on Zoom as Councilman Courts. Oops, he's out. Okay. All right, he's out tonight. Next thing on the agenda will be the consent agenda. We have three items. Is there anyone who'd like to have one of those three items pulled? Saying none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Saying none, those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Next item is a public hearing. Consideration of an application to rezone the following property. Fronting on South Scale Street and Freeway Drive, Rockingham County, Platte Book 97, page number 66, from residential 20 and highway business to highway business. Chad E. Abbott of C-3 Design and Engineering submitted the application. Docket number Z 2024-02, enclosure one. Ms. Drew Bigelow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and City Manager Summer Water. Chad Abbott of C-3 Design and Engineering is petitioning to rezone a property with frontage on South Scale Street and Freeway Drive, Rockingham County, Platte Book 97, page 66, from residential 20 and highway business to just highway business. The property owner is American Chartered Development. In January 2024 of this year, the property was recombinant. It previously consisted of four individual parcels. At the time of recombination, three of the four parcels were already zoned highway business, and the fourth parcel was zoned residential 20. This resulted in the creation of a split-zoned parcel upon recombination. The residential 20 portion of the parcel encompasses an area of just 0.2771 acres, and the entire parcel encompasses a total area of 30.3181 acres. By rezoning the entire parcel to highway business, we are able to eliminate the split zoning and bring the parcel into conformity. The surrounding land use is a mix of residential 20, highway business, residential agricultural 20, and industrial 20. The abutting areas to the north and west are zoned residential 20. The abutting areas to the south and east are zoned highway business. Overall, the area is primarily residential with a few commercial and industrial properties sprinkled throughout. Considering the presence of an existing highway business zoning designation on the majority of the parcel, rezoning this residential 20 portion to highway business would be consistent with the surrounding area. This property is located in Growth Management Area 4, which is rural, and encompasses the areas to the east, southeast, west, and northwest of the city. GMA 4 prioritizes large lot development and has an existing road network that can easily accommodate growth. While GMA 4 suggests limited development, it does not exclude it entirely. Therefore, we find the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 Reevesville Land Development Plan. The planning staff finds the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest based on the information provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. The planning staff recommends the proposed rezoning be approved. Take any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Bigelow? Thank you, Ms. Bigelow.
Thank you.
The public hearing will open at 6:06. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? The rezoning. Introduce yourself, please, and give us your name and address.
Good evening, Board. I am Chad Abbott with C-3 Design and Engineering. I have prepared the application for you. I am the principal engineer at C-3 Design and Engineering at 2537 East Line Station Road in Creedmore, North Carolina. First, I'd like to commend you on still having an invocation and a pledge. That's refreshing to see, so I commend you for that. Secondly, I've had the pleasure of working with staff over the past several months on this property, and then as we wound down our site planning activities, we had to do a recombination plat. And the proposal you have before you tonight is strictly to prevent a split-zoned property within the city. The recombination plat was exempt, and we have recombinant the property, but in doing so, there's a sliver on one side of the property that is still zoned in the residential zoning. So just to keep the property consistent as a whole and not have a split-zoned property, we do wish to rezone this 0.27 acre parcel to highway business. So I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have regarding the application at the proper time.
Any questions? Any questions? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Saying none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at 6:08. Council, do we have a motion? And there's a motion prepared for this particular rezoning.
I make a motion that we do approve what we have here at the height of the rezoning. Make that motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination states, statements that are included in the council agenda package, submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Barbara. Next, we have plans and projects. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. Next consideration of City of Reevesville Economic Development Strategy, Strategic Plan, enclosure two. So moved, the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The City of Reevesville contracted with Sanford-Holson-Houser to develop an economic development strategic plan for the City of Reevesville. The purpose of this plan was to assess growth opportunities for our residential business and industrial communities in Reevesville. This plan outlines the history of the Economic Development Department as well in the City of Reevesville. In your packet, you will have the attached strategic plan. This was discussed in quite a bit of detail at our annual retreat held on February the 15th. So if council desires tonight, it would be to formally approve this plan, and the appropriate motion would be to adopt the Economic Development Strategic Plan as presented.
Any questions of the manager? Had an opportunity to review the plan, is there a motion to approve?
So make a move, so move.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Barbara? Barbara? Are you ready to vote?
Barbara, can you hear?
Okay.
I can't hear, but I vote for it, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Consideration of recommended engineering firm for Piedmont Street and Antipen Overfall Rehabilitation Project, enclosure three, Josh Beck.
Mayor and Council, Mr. Beck apologizes that he had a family emergency come up, so tonight I'll be, you'll get to hear a lot from me tonight. I'll be presenting his items if that's okay with Mayor and Council.
It's fine.
So what you have before you tonight is the Engineering Division of the City of Reevesville prepared a request for root qualifications for local engineering firms to respond on the proposed Piedmont Street and Antipen Sewer Outfall Rehab Project. The scope of the work includes evaluating the current conditions of the sewer mains for necessary rehabilitation using typical trenchless methods as well as designing some minor relocations where sewer mains appear to have previously been built. The selected firm will also install several flow meters to evaluate potential inflow and infiltration, otherwise known as INI, in this particular section to assist with future studies and proper pipe sizing. The RFQ for engineering services was emailed directly to eight qualified engineering firms and was published in the Greensboro News and Records. Those firms are listed in your packet. Three of the firms all indicated that they are heavily backlog of work, so they declined the opportunity to work on this project. However, we did receive a proposal from DMP, which is Davis, Martin &amp; Powell. No response was obtained from the other four firms. Based on the one proposal and the received knowledge of the DMP's municipal experience with this type of work, staff recommends to city council that we select DMP for the proposed Piedmont Street and Antipen Outfall Sewer Rehab Project. If approved, staff will then schedule a meeting to begin contract negotiations for your approval at a future city council meeting.
Any questions of the manager?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that probably in the future, this is going to happen a lot, where we just don't get the response, where everybody is so busy. So I just want to make sure that we, as a city, feel confident in the work that they will do for us.
And we do. Based on what staff interviewed with them, we are comfortable with their level of work. Thank you. And Mayor and Council, I would like to just point out, too, that this is the Antipen Outfall. This was possible through the funding that we were able to solicit from Representative Pearl's office and Senator Berger's office. So that funding is grant funding.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve it as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of engineering contract amendment for wastewater treatment plant biological nutrient removal, BNR project, enclosure four. Ms. Water.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've got a full packet on the wastewater treatment plant BNR project. The original contract with McGill Associates for this project was actually signed back in April of 2018. Since then, the project has held up for a number of years to do no fault of a selected engineering firm. Furthermore, during our first bid process with this project, several interested construction firms mentioned the timeline to complete the scope of work, and as we're all aware, that was during COVID-19, and then post-COVID due mainly to equipment lead times. With that, based on this request, based on the view of the current contract, we request an extension of the construction duration in events surrounding the previous two bidding phases. Staff recommends acceptance of the contract amendment in which you have attached in your packet for the wastewater treatment plant bio nutrient removal project with McGill Associates. It should be noted that the previous funding application to the state included the increases outlined above to ensure all necessary funding was in place should council decide to approve this amendment. And the attached amendment is also follows if you have any questions.
Any questions of Manager Water? We have a motion on amendment number one. So moved.
Second.
Miss, I made a motion. Okay. Barbara. Barbara, okay. Any discussion? Saying none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item. Consideration of contract with alumina slash Duke Energy for lighting replacement at water treatment plant, enclosure five. Manager Water.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to give a shout out to our Public Works Director and Josh Beck, but also our water treatment plant operator Blake, who did a great job in identifying the need to look at this. So the City of Reevesville Water Treatment Plant, as we all may know, was originally constructed in 1978. Throughout the operations of the building, a high-service pump buildings and chemical building, has over 150 light fixtures, which are mostly original and typically incandescent lighting. Incandescent lighting fixtures use about five times more electricity than LED light fixtures and have an average shorter lifespan. The water plant is looking to work with alumina, a partner with Duke Energy, to replace lights in this building at the plant and install motion sensors to allow better energy savings. The water plant also would gain better lighting in working areas of the plant that are poorly lit. Alumina has currently done a cost savings analysis and determined that this would save the water treatment plant an average of $710 a month in electricity costs. The program is funded upfront by alumina and repaid by the City of Reevesville over a seven-year contract. The City of Reevesville payment to alumina each month would be $639. This would be an estimated net savings of $71. After the seven years, the equipment would be fully owned by the City of Reevesville. This project comes with money savings, a low carbon footprint, but most importantly, it comes with better lighting for our water treatment plant employees. So we're asking for approval of the proposed contract in your packet.
Any questions of Manager Water?
I have some questions, please. Ms. Water, when we're talking about the savings, the $710 a month, is that based on our past electric bills, not what they propose our future ones will be?
It is what we're currently, and as we all know, electricity is going up, so it is based on what our current bills are.
And the motion sensors, they will be so that when, the motion sensors will turn the lights on and off so they don't stay on all the time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, one more question. The light says it has a shorter lifespan, so what is the lifespan of these? Do we know?
Don't know the specifics, but I know with anything with the incandescent, like, I mean, you do have a shorter lifespan. Where your LED, you get a longer lifespan. A lot of times, it's double the lifespan.
So we hope it's at least our seven years.
I certainly hope so, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Most of those light fixtures are under warranty for up to 10 years anyway, so if they did quit working, then they would, should be theoretically replaced for free by this company anyways.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's been said, but good work to Mr. Beck and his team out there, just seeing how that we could save the city money. That's a great job.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that information. Councilman Martin? We have a motion for the master service agreement.
Make a motion on that.
Anywhere, a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, consideration of updated procurement plan and policy for the city's CDBG infrastructure project and corresponding resolution. That also is Manager Water.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Program, which is the CDBGI, recently updated their procurement plan and policy for 2024. To utilize the remaining CDBGI funds we currently earn receipt of and plan to be eligible for future grants, we must adopt these recent revisions. All requested revisions in this policy are provided in your packets and noted in red. This request is similar to the previous compliance plans that were updated and adopted by the city in 2020, 2021, and 2023. Some of the recent changes to the procurement plan and policy includes reasonable cost analysis, ensuring maximum competition is utilized, updates on bid alternative policies, processes to follow after a multitude of bid attempts, and contract modifications in reference to change orders. What we're requesting tonight, in order to remain eligible for future grants through the CDBGI program, staff recommends that the city council adopt the updated CDBG compliance plans dated as of January 1, 2024. And you can see the difference in your packet and the current plan proposal versus the new proposal. The new proposal changes are outlined in red.
Any questions of Manager Water?
Manager Water, if I have something, please adopt both your plan and your resolution.
And the resolution, yeah. We'll have two motions. Motion for the plan and policy, or the procurement plan and policy. You're making a motion? Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Saying none, those in favor, raise your right hand. And now for the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Manager Water, you take a breather there. Human Resources, consideration of marketing economic development. Now, you've got to read that one, too. Yeah. Consideration of marketing economic development restructuring, enclosure seven. You almost got a break.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we discussed this at length at our retreat, but I do just want to do some highlights. So what we're proposing is a restructuring, and this looks at the director, the position to be director of marketing and economic development. The City of Reevesville's been actively recruiting for an economic development director since July of 2023. We received very few inquiries for this position. We did interview two candidates in the fall of 2023. We could not come to terms with what the candidate expected in terms of work schedule. So the city's been contracting with Sanford-Holson-Houser for bridge management services since March of 2023. They've also been conducting our search for an economic development director. The size of our city is often maybe a deterrent for some applicants, and then some of your seasoned applicants are looking for larger municipalities. The city also currently has an opening for our city marketing position. This position oversees our citywide marketing campaign, and this position also has two direct reports. One direct report is the Main Street Manager position, and the other is the penthouse manager position. I would like to propose combining the Economic Development Director position and the City Marketing Director position into one position, which would be titled Director of Marketing and Economic Development. This position would be a direct report to the city manager. I would also like to propose taking the savings from combining these two positions and creating a new position titled Business Development Manager. This position would report to the Director of Marketing and Economic Development. The primary purpose of this position would be to assist new and existing businesses with navigating through the business process. For an example, if an individual is interested in starting a bakery in the city, their point of contact would be the Business Development Manager. This employee would walk them through a step-by-step process on who they needed to speak with and what paperwork or grants would be available to assist them with their business plan. As we all know, that is one thing just trying to pride ourselves on, is open communication and dialect and making sure we're easily accessible to our residents. And I do think that this position would garner a lot of support in being able to have the one liaison that someone could go to and they could walk them through water and sewer. They could take them to planning and community development. Your potential business is not just left to figure it out. You'd actually have that person guiding them. So what if city council is in favor of this restructuring and creating a new position titled Business Development Manager? The next step would be for approval of these positions and for us to continue to work with human resources to create job descriptions for these positions. Our HR director has done an outstanding job in drafting those two positions. We do have a preliminary draft. We are also working with Lanice Lane, who is contracted with the city to, for lack of a better term, pretty up the ads. Maybe it would garner more attention if it didn't read like a boring bulletin or something. So we are trying to find creative ways to maybe garner the right individual to fill these roles. So we just wanted tonight to get council's blessing, if you so desire, to move forward with this restructuring, because it is a cost savings for our residents, but I think it's also providing a service, because we're using the savings from combining those two positions to create an instrumental role in business navigation for the City of Reevesville.
Sounds like it would cut out some of the red tape and would enhance our customer service.
I would just say that I think it would be wonderful. I actually tried to reach out to you yesterday, and this was what that was for, was for a particular person. I never followed back up with Jason to get him to help him, but this is exactly what they're asking for, for a new business to go on Freeway Drive, and I've never told you that. But so it's a need for it, obviously, right now. You know, a lot of people will see you create these positions, and then you're talking about taking the savings and putting another position, and people from the outside will say, well, they could have saved that money, somebody else could have done that. But obviously, there's a need, there's a need for that. You know, I'd say as of yesterday, I personally was requested that need, you know, so.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. We appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment. All of these positions, I think, are very important to the city of Reedsville, but this Business Development Manager is going to be our future. I honestly believe that.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a question. So I'm trying to open a taco store with my sister-in-law. The Business Development Position?
We can't do that right now.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, can't do that right now. We'll set you up with someone. If you leave your name and address and telephone number, we'll set you up to get in contact with somebody.
Thank you.
At a later date. Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
The moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, would you please raise your right hand? All right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Consideration of changes to the city's personnel policy held over from our last month's meeting for additional updates, enclosure eight, the Ann Basinger, Human Resources.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Council, Madam Manager, it's good to be here with y'all tonight. I have to share with you the experience I had coming in the building this evening. I pulled up about back about 15 minutes till six, and the Sky's the Limit Park was just full of children. As I was walking into City Hall, I heard a young man ask his dad, say to his dad, "That was so much fun, can we please come back tomorrow?" So kudos on that park and the impact it's having on our community. It just, it makes me happy every time I see those kids out there.
One of the best things we've ever done.
It's amazing.
It's really amazing. So when we met in February at the retreat, we had several proposals to the personnel policy that was previously adopted by city council in August of 18, I think. And a couple of those, we walked away with y'all wanting additional revisions done to. Specifically, the on-call policy. We had different on-call rates of pay for the week for being on-call for different divisions. And we also had different guaranteed number of hours of pay if an employee was called back in while on-call. So y'all asked that we standardize that, and so that's what we've done. We've made it consistent so that if you are on-call for the city of Reedsville, regardless of which division or department you're in, you'll be compensated $100 per week for being on-call. And the second thing we did is we guaranteed a two-hour minimum, again, regardless of the department or division that you're in. If you get called out after regular business hours, you get paid a minimum of two hours before coming back into work after hours. The other things are exactly what we presented at the budget retreat, there were no changes there. So I'm asking, now that we've made the changes to the on-call, if you would propose all of the changes that we proposed at the retreat.
Any questions? Have thought of how they're saying a motion?
May I make the motion that we approve the proposed changes to the personnel policy in this year?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Ain't none? Those in favor, raise your right hand.
The second thing that came out from the budget retreat in February was the police department had done a really good job at developing a police interpreter policy, which would allow their employees that are fluent in more than one language to function as a police interpreter for police business. And y'all asked that we please look at doing that citywide. So I did work with what the police department had previously developed, as well as what some of my peers in other municipalities had used. And we now have before you a proposal for a bilingual pay incentive for all of our employees across the city who can demonstrate a true fluency, and that includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening to a second language other than English, that they will be compensated at a rate of $50 per week, as long as they remain fluent. If they ever lose their language skills, then they would lose that incentive. We are going to work with an outside vendor who will actually certify them as fluent across reading, writing, listening, and hearing of a second language. And they will also be charged to help us if we need to develop written materials in another language. As part of that incentive for being bilingual, we'll be able to turn to them to help us if we needed to do signage on the building or signage at parks, or even perhaps in the future, the agenda packet in a second language. That would be the expectation of receiving this incentive. We will try to do that kind of work during their regular hours to avoid overtime or calling them back in for that. But the understanding will also be if there is an issue that involves potential life or property damage, that they would be available after hours to function as an interpreter if we needed to speak directly with the resident regarding a very serious matter.
Any questions?
Do they have to certify every so often to maintain that certification?
We did not build that into the policy. I think that that's not a terrible idea, but it's a new policy, let's see how it goes. I don't think we're going to have a lot of people step forward and say, hey, I can speak three languages. I think what we're going to have is people that are already bilingual and are using a second language in their home or with their family will be the ones that we'll certify. Now, if we've got somebody that wants to do language lessons in the future and they're not a native speaker of a second language, then that's when we probably need to look at a recertification process.
So I think you misunderstood what I was saying. So you, in order for them to be put in this, they have to go through this certification process?
Yes.
So I guess like, is there a reevaluation of that certification every couple of years?
Not, not a formal revow through HR, but their supervisor will monitor the use and do they remain bilingual?
And maybe the chief is back there, but from a law enforcement standpoint and from a court standpoint, I know that there can be issues if we don't maintain some certification. If these guys are interpreting for law enforcement, there's been several court cases even here where those interpreters are challenged. So I feel like there would be a need that this, that this certification is whatever the standards of DOJ is, that we maintain this, just like continuing education. It could be the difference in win or lose in a serious court case.
And I'm going to defer to the chief. That may be included in the police department's policy because their policy is separate from the rest of the city's policy.
And it's not comforting, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, okay. So I would think that we would need to adopt that so we could potentially avoid any legal issues or losses of crimes. And then there have been minor cases, simple things like such as this, where some heinous crimes have been let go for the lack of the interpreter, where they've just used someone off the street during the investigation, and it jeopardizes that. So we need to, you know, change that somehow so that this is a, I feel like that certification, I believe is annual, but we could obviously seek legal counsel on that, you know, to correct that.
Could we add this without postponing the vote?
We can do that if you would want to. And what we can do is we can add that in there, and then, Ms. Angela, if you'll make a note in my manager's report next month, I'll include that to show what we came up with. But I think that is a very good suggestion that you had, Councilmember Martin. And Ms. Lee, and it may not be a bad idea to reach out to the individuals who are the groups going to be certifying, is ask what do they recommend, because that's not a bad thought process at all. But yeah, that I think we can, we can accommodate that so we can get this up and going, and then I can just report it back in my manager's report.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how many different languages we might have that we might be able to use?
So at this point, I'm only aware of our employees that speak Spanish fluently. Now, there may be some that once this is published to them, they come up and say, hey, I also speak French. I don't know that we have a great need. I don't know that we have a lot of French-speaking residents in Reedsville, but it would be nice to know who has that ability. And I think it probably needs to be driven by our need rather than their ability. Right, I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
The moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any others discussion? Ain't none? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is public comments. Ma'am?
Oh, yes.
If you would like to tell us in a public way what you'd like to do, give us your name and address, you've got three minutes. And if you can't get everything done in three minutes, we'll take your name and address and get in contact with you.
My name is Me, and I'm actually a nurse, but I am also a businesswoman. I own a construction company, and so we have a property on 804 Piedmont Street. So my question was, do these sewer things involve the 804 property for Piedmont Street?
All we can do is just listen to you right now.
I'm sorry. And because I am planning to make that into a taco store, and so I will get everything together with my sister-in-law and my niece here. They're from Mexico. My brother-in-law was shot and killed last year, and so my family members are here trying to open their business, and they are making tamaleys and tacos from their home now on Bricks Road. So, but thank you for listening, and yes, if you had the answer to that question regarding the engineering sewer standpoint, thank you.
If you can leave your information here. We're always interested in food.
Especially good food, right?
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, public comment?
Yes, I've been here before. My name is Vanessa Wilson. I live at 403 Sprinkle Street here in Reedsville. I just wanted to make a comment and give you guys prompts with you taking care of the issue of the parking at the west end of Sprinkle Street. They straightened it out. I appreciate y'all for doing that for me because I have a lot of concern for that. I grew up in that area, I told you that once before, but I'm on the east end of Sprinkle Street now, and I did say something about that intersection at Sprinkle Street and Scale Street. I know the city is doing a lot of street work right now all over Reedsville. I was just wondering, are they planning on making a change at that intersection? Because if you go back there, you can see where a lot of tires hit that curving when they trying to make that right turn on Sprinkle Street. I was just wondering, had y'all made a decision about that area? You don't know if it's on budget, you don't know anything what's going on. If you get a chance to go through there, you guys ride through there, you understand what I'm talking about, and it creates a big issue right there at the intersection. And I do have another question. With the historical side, I don't know if I need to talk about it now. How can you participate with the historical society? I saw the thing on the board that they have at the intersection of Reedsville downtown, so I wanted to get the information about that, too.
Unless if you leave your telephone number, we'll try to find out what you need and get, and get back with you on that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Ms. Vanessa, thank you for those kind words. We'll move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So a couple items of note. I know very early in the morning, Councilmember Scoble, our Assistant City Manager, and Finance Director Chris Phillips, and myself will be heading to Goldsboro, North Carolina for the annual Main Street Conference, and our Main Street Manager is already down there along with the members of our RDC Board. So we're very excited about that. We're actually going to be presenting on our all-inclusive park, so we're very excited for that opportunity to be able to showcase that as a huge involvement with our Main Street program. Couple of upcoming events, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Town and State Dinner, they're doing them a little bit differently this year. Instead of just having the one day where everyone goes to Raleigh, they're rotating them. The one most of us selected to go to is going to be March 20th at Meridian Restaurant in Winston-Salem, and it's from 5:15 to 8:00 p.m. And then the North Carolina City Vision 2024 will be held Tuesday, April 23rd through Thursday, April 25th at the Benton Convention Center in Winston. Couple of personnel updates. I would like to give a special thanks to our Assistant City Managers, Mr. Haywood Cloud and Chris Phillips. We participated, myself included, with Walk a Day in Their Shoes. This past month was spent at Public Works Department. Assistant City Manager Cloud poured concrete with our Streets Division, and he was actually on-site at the penthouse pouring the dumpster pad when I found him. So truly worked a day in their shoes.
So did you actually have a trial in your hand?
There are pictures.
There are.
And then our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Phillips, spent the day at our wastewater treatment plant, where he worked with our RRC with documenting data and seeing some of their needs. And then I had the opportunity to get to spend the day with our solid waste department. On a funny side note, I did not realize how many thirds we have in our landfill. I went, I was responsible for going and loading, assisting with taking natural loads to the landfill. We have a lot of seagulls at the landfill for some weird unknown reason. I have photos if anyone questions that. So just really want to thank the opportunity for Public Works to let us work with them this month. It certainly gives us a different perspective on what they do in their day-to-day lives and how important they are for our teammates. I believe our next Walk a Day in Their Shoes, I believe we're going to the police department. So we've got several outlined for this upcoming year, but I really just want to thank both our ACMs for their willingness to go out and participate in these different job duties with our teammates. So thank you both gentlemen. Also, Gary Lovelace retired with the city of Reedsville on February 29th, and just want to give him a special shout-out and wish him all the best on his retirement. He was the street supervisor and had been with the city of Reedsville for over 20 years. Gary and his crew were instrumental, along with Lindsay Tuttle, in our downtown streetscapes that you saw, our all-inclusive park. Their talent is what created the opportunity for us to be able to do those, and what a showcase. He's certainly in a legacy he leaves behind. Also, one of the things we talked about personnel at our retreat is the city of Reedsville is recruiting for an Assistant Public Works Director. This position was discussed at the retreat last month, and this position is just a reclassification. So we're using existing budget dollars to fund this reclass. A couple of project updates, very excited to report that the splash pad, we're getting there. Vortex will be on-site March the 14th through the 15th, so if you want to go down there and test out some of the equipment, Mayor and Council, please come on down. We'll see how that splash pad's working, but they should be on-site to test that. Penthouse Building Project, I think that we've got several of those things completed, and Ms. Angela, I believe, sent out, and we're going to be looking at doing a ribbon-cutting and a dedication to Ms. Judy Arboreau for her endless support in the penthouse and this venue of the Carriage House. Ms. Angela, when was the date of that?
Monday, March 25th, I believe, at 12:00 p.m.
Thank you. Streetscape Project on Settle Street, I'd encourage again, Gary Lovelace and his crew and Lindsay Tuttle, they have done a remarkable job working on that. We were able to get, the biggest one we were working on was waiting on the plumber to come with the water line across Settle Street that was completed. Also, our vinyl bus stop shelter, Public Works installed the last gap bus stop shelter last week, and it was placed at the splash pad. And then the last note I had was undirectional flushing. Since 2013, the city has undergone periodic undirectional flushing, flushing which has caused rid water lines of sediment and other minerals. So we are working on that as well. And with that, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to conclude my report.
Mr. Anderson's reports, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Mayor and Council, I've just got just a few things. On February the 15th and 16th, I attended the retreat at the penthouse. the retreat at the penthouse. And I'd like to commend everybody that had a hand in that, our city manager and staff, who did an excellent job in walking us through their process. On February 18, I attended the McLaurin Good Neighbor Association Annual Friendship Rally, which was held at the McLaurin Harris Chapel. On March the 4th, attended the two-on-two meeting at City Hall with the manager and the mayor. And on March the 6th, attended the ordinance meeting at City Hall.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Dejade.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for letting me do this by Zoom. On the 16th, 15th through 16th, the city council, I attended the city council retreat by Zoom. Also attended the chamber board meeting on the 28th by Zoom. I was able to get out for the Turtle Creek ribbon cutting for a short period, which felt really good. And then on the 4th, attended a special city council meeting on the 4th and 6th by Zoom. And congrats on the Walker Day in My Shoes. That's a fantastic project.
Councilwoman Hurst. Well, ma'am, I know you're going to probably already say this, but I just want to say we certainly, city reg, salute the McLaurin family. Tom McLaurin was taken home to be with the Lord just not too long ago. And certainly, the McLaurin family has been so instrumental in doing excellent things in our community to help so many, so many neighbors, citizens, the McLaurin Good Neighbors Association, and and just a list of good things. And so our prayers are certain with Sister Yolanda and the whole entire McLaurin family. And that's my report.
Councilwoman Martin.
I attended the two-on-two meetings on the 15th and 16th, and the other ones we had here on February the 28th. I just attended, Groen Oaks Church has a program that they do at Monroe Elementary School. It's called Disciples of Truth. They do a Bible study with the children there. And then they put on a show on the 28th at the church, you know, for that. And I attended that.
Sir, Councilwoman Scott.
Thank you, sir. I would just mention a few of the things that I did. February 22, I attended the ABC Board. February the 27th, the RDC Board. And one of the things that I'm most proud of is I am president of the Reedsville Kiwanis Club. And each month, we work with kids at South End Elementary School and also Mall Street School. So on the 29th, our Terrific Kids Awards, we awarded 40 kids with a special certificate. This month, they were working on self-control. And they were voted on by their teachers and their bus drivers. But that was a great day for 40 kids to get their certificates. Their parents came, they took pictures. It was very exciting. And I also want to announce that this Friday night at the Reedsville High School from 4 to 8 is the Kiwanis Pancake Supper. All the pancakes and sausage you can eat for $8. Kids 10 and under free. So we need everybody to come out. The Kiwanis Club, we work with the kids in our community. We serve the kids of the world, starting right here with kids right here in Reedsville. So it's a real important program. We also will be raffling off a 36-inch Blackstone Grill, which is great for steaks or chicken or even pancakes at home. And those will have those tickets that night. So Reedsville High School, 4 to 8, that's the place to be this Friday night. I also have something else I'd like to say. Some of the council members have received letters, phone calls, emails, and even threats regarding the decision that we made in January for the South Park rezoning. We have two council members for each district in Reedsville, District A and District B. And the people that live in that district can vote for that council member. So you choose your council member. We also have two council members that are at large. I and Councilman Brown are at large. That means everybody in the city votes for us. So when we, I come to the chamber, I am Councilwoman Scoble. I am not Teresa Scoble. And I must listen to both sides of everything that's brought before us. And then I have to vote on what's best for the whole city. I can't choose a neighborhood or a person. This vote that we made in January was in my neighborhood. But I had to vote on what was right for the city of Reedsville, not for me, not for my neighbors. And we have findings of fact. When we answer those questions, yes or no, if the questions are all yes, then our vote has to be yes. It's only those findings that will determine what our vote is. And we can't take it personally. I can't, I can't vote on what my neighbor wants, or what I want, or what I think is best. I have to vote for what's for the whole city. Like it or not, I'm Councilwoman Scoble, and I have to take everything into consideration. I cannot have a conflict of interest about anything or any person. I cannot make my decisions based on friends or family or my financial interest or your financial interest. I have to vote on what's best for the city of Reedsville. I'm very proud to be, to represent the citizens of Reedsville. I'm very proud to be from Reedsville. And I love this position as being a councilwoman. And I will never do anything to put the city of Reedsville in peril or at risk. And I just think that's true about all of our council members. And I just want the public to understand what we have to do. Some of our decisions are very hard, you know, but we can't take it, we can't take it personally. And I'm sorry about the attitude that some of our citizens had. But we're doing the best we can, and we're doing what we think is right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you say, did you say that you got a threatening letter? Or you say two people got a threatening letter?
Several of us got.
Councilmembers got threatening letters?
Yes, sir.
This is first I was heard of, and I just asked city managers. I was just curious. I was not aware of that, you know.
All right. I'm going to forego my long list of appointments this past cycle. And I want to say. Well, I'm not going to leave you out. I saw you sitting over there. You're a part of what I'm going to say. This is Women's History Month. And I think that we should salute all of our queens. We have a lot of ladies in Reedsville and all over the United States who are sitting in leadership roles, who are doing some dynamic things to make sure that their communities are great and livable. There are several of you who come to every council meeting to see what's going on in Reedsville. And I know you take what you hear here outside and spread it, spread that good news. And spread the not-so-good news sometimes if it's not-so-good news. But our queens do a lot to make life worth living. We've got leadership here in Reedsville. First female city manager. Our chamber is led by a female. And these are strong females. They're tough. So I think we should just salute the women for this month. And salute them every day. Just like I was told last month, that black history doesn't just occur in February. It's every day. And women do fantastic things every day. It's evident even in public comments tonight. We've got a group of women who are getting together. They're getting ready to open up a new restaurant, hopefully. That's going to make the community better. As I said, we always want to hear about food. So let's salute the women of Reedsville. With that said, one of our strong females in the city of Reedsville, Diane Sawyer. She's going to give us some good news tonight.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, prepare me for that a little bit better. Straighten my crown a little bit. So since we are doing so well, that means I have about like 30 minutes to hold on, right?
Yep, 30 minutes. Take all the time.
All right. So I am really excited about a couple of things that are that are happening. I want to talk about the ribbon cuttings first, actually. Thank you to Ms. Angel for coordinating with us on that. We are really excited about the Carriage House ribbon cutting. Also, the paper that you have in your hand, it has some information on it. I need you to not share that information yet because we will not steal but businesses thunder. I will announce that there is a ribbon cutting, but I want to not announce where. You have the where on your paper, but please don't share that. The Boardwalk Baker, we are so excited. They've been a member for a long time. And everybody's asking where and what city and all that. I will just say they are a member of the Reedsville Chamber and have been for some time. And we are hosting a ribbon cutting for them on April 18 at 12:00 noon in the new location. And I'm going to leave it at that. But you have all the info. Please don't share. I say all that to say, I'm going to jump down to next to the new members. We are so excited about Farming Up Pet Foods. And if you do not know, our board member Chad Blakely has gone to work for them as their new HR director. So that is really exciting to have somebody that strong in that position. And I think they are going to do some phenomenal things. We are also working on ribbon cutting and grand opening for that. They are looking at as an update, they're going to start probably the end of Q3 and Q4 testing. So they are looking to be rolling out Q1 of next year. So somewhere in that timeframe, unless things change, is where, and they already have plans for expansion. They're already, they're not even finished building, and they're looking at expansion. So we are excited about what they're doing. Chad will tell you, he calls it the bougie pet food, because he has learned about all the science behind it. And it is, it is very much, if they come up with a truck of lamb, they go out and inspect it. And if it doesn't meet inspection, they turn it away. Like, it's, it's a pretty intricate process. So we're really excited about that. I hope you all are, too. Also, coming up and upcoming events, we're really glad to be bringing back Topics at 12. That is our Chamber 101 University. And I tell anybody that if you think that you have learned everything, I promise you, you could have been to the event before. You could be a new member, an old member. Come to that event. You will learn something. We talk about the things that we offer, like discounts for workers' comp insurance. We talk about marketing options. We talk about how to log into the website. So please promote that. We are excited about some of the things that the city is doing, especially with these positions that Summer has been discussing tonight. I expect to be working hand in hand with those people, and I think it's going to be phenomenal. Also, our staff appreciation celebration. We have not changed the event name, and we will not until you dedicate it. But that is obviously in the same place that it is going to be at the future Carriage House on April 24. It is from 11 to 2. And that is that event where we host on Administrative Professionals Day, which is on the 4th Wednesday in April every year. And it's a service event, so we're providing it to our members to be able to send employees to be appreciated. So we're excited. And we have 100% participation of all of our committees, of our ambassadors, and our board members. And there's just a lot of great things happening. Next week will also be our Directory Blitz. And so we're waiting to have the books in hand, but it should, they should come out next week. First time that the chamber has ever published those ourselves. So we took that project in-house, and we're very excited to see how that turns out. So we'll be sure to have one in all of your boxes soon. All right. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
And I've said this before, but one of the best decisions that the city of Reedsville ever made was their partnership with the Reedsville Chamber. And we are so proud of that. And you and your staff just do an excellent job.
Thank you. We actually had a meeting today with the Eaton Chamber because Jim Burnett, as a former city council, and now leading their chamber, the first thing he did was he came to see me. And that's the first time that a director has done that. And all of those lots of directors, and I applauded him for reaching out and asking questions. And I told him, I said, that was my first goal. My first goal that I was given by the board was fix the relationship with the city, whatever it takes, whatever it means. And so I feel like we've worked really hard to do that. And I appreciate each and every one of you and all the things that you do.
Thank you.
If you don't have a good relationship with the chamber, it's almost like you got a fight in your family. Your family needs to be together. Okay, next thing, we move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to observe the, we're not doing that tonight. Okay. All right. We're not doing that tonight. Again, I'd like to say, men, salute the queens. We're celebrating our queens this month, every day of this month. If there be nothing else, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? Do we need to have another maybe 30 minutes? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you all for coming out.